Like.
Didn't start, we were on time ish.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started. Uh, call it to order, the commission study session and uh, no need for roll call, awards, presentations or important. Philip, any?
No, sir, no.
Special reports from other departments wastewater liaison.
So we own the agenda number L with the barge engineering agreement, the wastewater plant. Matthew is here to talk a little bit about that, uh, so I think it's a good time to put him up here now to talk about it. It's okay.
Thank you, Matthew.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the item that I believe is on the agenda is a amendment to our contract. Um, and I forgive me, I, before I get kind of going on that, what does the board, is the board aware of kind of the issues with the schedule?
Yes.
Okay, um, so basically this is a continuation of our services as the contractor continues their work uh, to to finally finish hopefully, um, sooner than later. The, just as a refresher for the, for the board members, uh, the council members, excuse me, uh, the original complete substantial completion date per the contract was July thirteenth of this year. The final completion date, um, that basically the difference between those two is substantial completion is the, the uh, facility is usable. We have, we can utilize the facility for treatment. Um, final completion between those two dates, uh, cleanup, you know, grassing, those types of things. So the, any minor little things would be, would occur during that time. So final completion contractually was uh, September eleventh of this year. So the contractor is still working, we're now obviously in November. The most recent schedule that the contractor provided showed them being substantially complete at the end of January, January thirty first of next year. And then final completion being March seventh of next year. Um, so obviously them being past their contract time, uh, we were contracted to provide services through the end of their contract, so obviously we passed that as well. So this again would just be a continuation of what we, what we have been doing up to this point, which is we've got one man on site who's been watching the kind, the construction, filling out daily reports, pointing out things that are, you know, not per the con- con- contract drawings and specifications. Um, and then uh, the, the other engineers that are involved in the project, we have regular progress meetings with contractor. Um, they have questions that come up occasionally, we have to work with them to answer those. So again, this, we would just continue that through the end of their work. Um, now what may not have been talked about before is because they're past their contract time, there are provisions in the contract uh, which are liquidated damages, um, since they did not meet their contractual due date. And for not meeting substantial completion, it's one thousand dollars per day that the contractor uh, is assessed for not meeting their contractual dates. And then for not meeting final completion, so that's after they uh, meet their substantial completion, if it is January thirty first of next year, then final completion, that's five hundred dollars per day until they, until they meet that, that date. Um, so the um, the services that we would be providing uh, should be part, uh, a set, the assessing the liquidated damages would pay for those uh, costs that are issued and occurring for our services to continue on past those original contractual dates. Um, so the, there may be some, you know, uh, trepidation or uh, or reluctance to continue to our services, but uh, obviously those would come out from the contractor since they didn't meet their contractual dates, contractual obligations from the beginning.
They will be paid by the city, but then we would speak it from.
Yeah, thank you, yes, yeah.
So there's no additional cost to the city?
No, well, so the city will have to pay barges invoices, like we'll get invoice from them. And then at, when it's time to pay the contractor, we will subtract what the liquidated damages from what's owed to them.
Right, yeah, and so if assuming that they meet, they do meet the January thirty first date of next year, then it'll be uh, over two hundred thousand dollars of damages that they will have basically incurred or summed up up to that point.
Any questions, I think we, Matthew, I think we went through this pretty well last month, didn't we?
Well, we knew that we hadn't completed substantial completion and then that the contract that they had with them, it's so I think build the last building on that as far as your service is right.
Right, yeah, we, I think our last, don't hold me to this, but I believe our last bill was to uh, uh, for our services up through what we had, what we were under contract for up to that.
What you have in front of you Tuesday night is the extension of the contract, I guess, for lack of better terms, to continue on with the services for the.
I guess my question is.
Yes, ma'am.
Contract company that had this, they didn't finish or they didn't, so they're taking over from where they left off?
No, so we have a contract with Barge to um, do all the engineering for the wastewater treatment plant. And the contractor is a different company, they're actually doing the work. The Barge's job is to provide the engineering, but also to oversee the contractor's work. And so because the contractor is taking more time than they should, Barge is having to do more work by going out there and I don't know what else you have to do, but I know you have oversight over the construction. So they're having to charge us more because of somebody else's delay. And then we will seek the liquidated damages, that a thousand dollars a day from the contractor that caused the delay.
And that should be enough to, it's paid.
Yes, so the liquidated damages is a set fee, so you don't have to like go through and calculate every single penny, but when they originally entered, when we all entered into these contracts, that was part of the determination of what the liquidated damages would be, cut, what would Barge's fees be, what would my fees be, what should that amount look like? Um, and so their estimate was a thousand dollars, that's what they put in there. Barge, I don't know if Matthew said it, but they are keeping up with very detailed um, kind of a separate billing so that we know exactly what they're spending in this additional, for this additional work. Um, but no, they've been here the whole time, they were, they did the design for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and so it's just the contractor's delay, so.
Right, yeah, we're not actually uh, involved in the construction.
We're not just overseer.
Uh, that's right, and like I, like I mentioned, we have a man on site full time, so he's over, he's watching all that's going on, making sure that, like I said earlier, that there, the contractor is doing the work per the contractual specifications and the drawings, engineering drawings. And then any issues that he sees, he will bring up, he'll, and if he needs to get the engineers involved, he'll do that. Um, like I said earlier, we also have, we still continue to have progress meetings with the contractor, cause just like all of y'all, we want to, we want them to get done as quickly as possible, but we also want to make sure that the city ends with a good product once they're done. So um, so that's part of the oversight that, that will continue um, and through, through this additional services.
Mr. Davis.
So the contractor is aware that more likely he's gonna owe two hundred thousand?
Ye- yes, sir.
So he's, he's good with it, is not?
Well.
It's not like we're gonna have to end up going to court and then it costs us more money than.
They sent a notice to um, the contractor back in July, I think, maybe to let him know that.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date, but once they didn't hit that original contractual date, we shortly after notified them, you didn't hit your contractual date, give us a recovery schedule and the city has the right to assess liquidated damages.
And Mr. Davis, I was worried about what you're talking about as well, so I've been through the contract, we've talked with USDA, who's where the money came from. And we can't assess the damages until they reach substantial completion. So it's, the damages incur up until substantial completion, but then after substantial completion is met, then we can assess the damages and then we can either offset it from what they owe us or just have it paid.
But to your question, um, they have been surprisingly mute about the fact that they've been told that. It's been a little surprising, but um, obviously once, if they do come back and send us a letter or any other communication, we'll make sure we coordinate with Phil and Corey.
Appreciate y'all staying.
Thank you.
Yes, thank y'all.
Any other questions for Matthew?
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Matthew, tell you that, I said hello.
Will do, thank y'all.
Uh, Mount Pleasant Gas, there'll just be a report on that Tuesday. Uh, we're gonna back up one monthly report from city manager, don't you, we wanted to discuss.
Yes, sir, so before we get to the, uh, discuss bypasses and the things we're doing to try to mitigate that, may have an agenda item added, uh, and it's, you've already passed a resolution, you know, we received a grant for the community center. Um, that's in today and it needs some different wording, I'll get with Corey, I don't know if we update the resolution or do another one.
I haven't seen it yet.
Uh, but just know that maybe in your packet tomorrow and it's a resolution where we received the one nine eight zero.
Zero one two.
Zero one two grant for the community center with the matching, so it may have, maybe in your uh, packet to reflect that. And then if you don't mind, Michael or Jack kind of give update on what we're trying to do with the bypass.
So, um, we've been in talks with T-Dot. Late as yesterday, day before, um, and lead with T-Dot, we spoke to him about more than speed limit on the bypass from First Avenue to the airport exit to reduce the likelihood of a severe crash. Um, also, uh, we've gotten some additional messaging boards coming out there to kind of alleviate the confusion of what's going on. Uh, the police department has been posting an officer out there and during the peak traffic times.
Appreciate it.
Um, and is, and that is a work in progress, cause we really don't know what we're dealing with till we get out there. This morning, the officer was out there, stopped traffic, um, the northbound traffic a couple times, maybe three, to allow that southbound turn lane that's turning onto Greenwood to allow those cars to empty out onto Greenwood, uh, South Cross Bridges. Uh, it's a work in progress. We, we really don't know what we're dealing with on most days, some days, traffic flow coming north is heavier than others, uh, but we are out there. Yes, sir.
I, I guess, cause I've been out there a couple of times and, and I guess I haven't hit it just right. And so what is the bad time for the traffic?
It's.
Cause I went at, I went at two thirty, I went at four o'clock and I went at five o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, it's the morning time.
Okay, just the morning, and I went at seven thirty, I think in the mo- in the morning, yes, seven thirty.
It's, um, I usually come in twenty six thirty and seven and it's starting to pick up. It's when it starts picking up, now that's the northbound traffic. That turning lane is during, when the school zone would actually kick up, which is seven.
Seven twenty is pretty bad.
Seven twenty, um, and.
That morning, I guess Philip, I didn't realize Philip was behind me.
Following you, yeah.
And, and, and everybody was talking about the traffic and I told Philip, I said, I'm scratching my head and there was no traffic and I, I.
I think the word started getting out too, that the, the easiest, safest route is to go up to First Avenue to get off on the one se- exit nine, one sixty six, and the message boards are gonna convey that, that that is the exit you take to get to downtown. Um, so, you know, hopefully that's gonna help and us being out there is gonna make that much easier.
Appreciate what y'all doing, I have, you know, a lot of people talking about it, that's why I went, but I, I don't know, I guess I should have went to a three little time.
Appreciate the sign.
My wife does too, so goodbye.
So are you, we are gonna slow it down northbound in the mornings?
We're gonna slow traffic down, period, in that area, uh, and that was, but on our recommendation.
Right, they're gonna put the speed limit up.
It's gonna reduce the.
They put the speed line.
They're, they're gonna put a forty-five mile an hour speed limit sign in that area from First Avenue to the airport exit, on both sides, southbound and down to northbound. So what is now fifty-five miles an hour will be forty-five, yes, sir.
It's fifty, yeah.
Fifty-five, but I guess you know. Yeah, I think it's fifty-five.
It's, it's fifty-five now.
But I, I guess, what I'm fixing to say, I mean, people's not gonna like it. You know, we used to like to say, give them, like they, you know, we'd give you a heads up and you'd get a week or two, you know, before you would start giving speed tickets. But I don't know in this case.
I can make it, that, that, we will be out there, um, the HP will be out there.
Well, I, that's what I'm saying, to me, as far as I'm saying, you know, it, it needs, people need to realize, it needs to be realized.
Yes, sir, what we can control is what we do on city streets. What I can say is, the speed limit's fifty-five, I, I, I was out there and of course I have an unmarked vehicle, I have tractor trailer trucks coming up on me running sixty, seventy-five miles an hour in a fifty-five in the inside lane, I'm in the outside coming down, I hit the blue lights, they slow down, they back off, they see the lights of that officer sitting over on the shoulder of the road slowing that traffic down. They're not, they're not speeding, uh, for the most part, you're, of course, you're gonna have that occasional one who's gonna totally ignore those blue lights. Now, you know, speeding is speeding, so.
Appreciate y'all doing that, that is.
We just wanna make sure.
I guess, you know, during that time for kids and all that.
We just wanna make sure everybody's safe, and we are coming up on a holiday week, Thanksgiving, so the traffic should shut up. Three weeks after that, we run into a two-week holiday for the school, so it should calm it down for a while, uh, but we're gonna, we're gonna adjust as we go.
Okay.
And, and do what we have to do to keep everybody safe out there. And the, and the wrecks we've worked so far, nothing had been bad, it's been fender benders, it's been some impatience going on and that's the big thing, we did have uh, a multiple car the other morning, there was all fender benders in the fog. So that's the other thing we're continuing with, we're getting into that type of weather with a heavy fog, yes, sir.
And I know the only other thing, I guess when people are coming north and you're pulling out, the fast lane can be empty, I don't care, them people will not, they will not get over.
They're moving over for the most part with the officers.
Yeah, they, they did this morning, I went through there this morning in the outside lane with door to doors.
I have noticed that, more people recognize that move over law now than they ever had, so.
That's good, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
And I'll say this, I was at a meeting with Philip and Jack and Michael, what, last Friday morning with the state? And that they said that they immediately agreed that they had made some mistakes. And by noon, how many new signs were there up by noon on Friday? After our meeting that morning. So I, I wanna give, what's the guy's name?
Lee.
Lee. He has been fantastic to work with. So just so everybody knows. Philip, anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, a hazard mitigation plan.
So the purpose of this resolution is to adopt the updated Murray County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, the plan has already been approved by FEMA. Murray County has asked each city to adopt the plan to make it, to make the approval formal and allow Murray County to be eligible for pre and post disaster mitigation funding. Um, I don't have a copy of the plan yet, but we've asked for it and it'll be in your packet.
This is, we, we've participated in this program for many, many years and it's, I, I'm just looking at like a piggyback, so it, it opens it up for us to be able to apply for those fundings as well when we have the need for it.
Any questions? Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, Sugar Creek Developers Agreement.
The purpose of this resolution is to authorize the city to enter into a development agreement. Um, Alan Blevins is developing property on Sugar Creek Road known as Sugar Creek Townhome. This development has already been approved by the planning commission. As part of the development, uh, the developer has agreed to provide for the installation of certain private and public infrastructure improvements. One of those improvements, it, the reason for this development agreement is the installation of a sixteen inch water line. The city's engineers, C E C, determined that the development could be serviced by an eight inch water line. However, the city asked the developer to construct an eight, a sixteen inch water line instead, and the developer agreed. So the city is responsible for the difference in cost between the eight inch line and the si- and the upgraded sixteen inch line, we call that betterment. So the betterment on this project is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To repay the betterment cost, the city is going to waive the water access fee, so that is thirty-five hundred times sixteen, um, which is fifty-six thousand. We're also gonna waive the tap, the water tap meter fees, which is two thousand times sixteen, or thirty-two thousand. And then we would have to pay the remainder to the developer, which is thirty-two thousand dollars, and we would pay that on completion of the project. Um, we outlined all of that in the development agreement. It has been reviewed by the planning commission and recommended to this board. And I know Mr. Blevins is here.
So, of course you have, whether it's home, betterment for the city, but you're going from eight to sixteen, I don't understand.
So there is a sixteen inch water line that is by the bridge, I believe, I was smiling because I have tried to explain this a bunch of different ways, but basically there's a big water line that we wanted to connect all the way through. And so instead of going from big to little.
You're gonna keep the sixteen.
And back to big, just stay sixteen.
Didn't need it to be that.
Yeah.
Well, we want it to be that big so we didn't have to go over small, okay.
So there's currently no line between Brookside and Main Street, so eight inch to there. And then where the asbestos line has been around a long time, you know, one of our offer projects is replacing that from the north end, we're gonna replace from there to the bridge. Um, we, we don't allow anyone to tap asbestos line anymore, it's just too brittle and too, too dangerous, so that's part of it. So always required for the development wasn't eight inch, but the betterment that we wanna do, continue for our master plan is sixteen, so that's.
Okay.
Talking about for a long time.
Corey, on, on the laden and all that, will you have that word in the?
Yes, it's in there, um.
In our packets when we get them?
Yeah, so it's, uh, I feel like it's on page six of the developer.
Sounds like you read that a time or two.
So there's this one that says reimbursement to developer and that's where it is. Um, but we tried, it's a long developer agreement. The purpose was to put all the different requirements from the site plan and into this development agreement so that we can use it as, as the master plan for this project. So we don't do this often, have a developer agreement, um, but we wanted to make this one easy for future references.
Lionel, Mr. Blevins has worked on this for several, several years.
Three.
Seems like it's been more than that, I don't know.
Might have been.
About a thousand feet of water line when you add it all up going all the way to Brookside.
So I appreciate everything you worked out.
Alan, anything else you'd like to add to it?
No, uh, we, we just, I think city did the best they could and of course I still think it's still short, I don't know what they have given to you, but, you know, but, but, you know, everybody worked very hard, diligently to try to be there, so.
Good.
We're just trying to make it work.
Good. Any other questions? Possible bid for East Merchant Street pavement.
Mayor Commissioners, so we did open bids this week, um, had two bids. I'm not sure we're gonna make a recommendation to you guys after further evaluation and talking with Dale. Um, we probably need to pipe burst or do something with the sewer line, we cambered it and it's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, do it right.
Yeah, and the bids were, they were higher than we expected.
I'm gonna have the numbers here.
You have the numbers?
I think the infrastructure need be.
Don't dig it up again.
Yeah, we need to.
We had the bid opening Wednesday afternoon and we had two companies bid, we had uh, Nickel and Company and then we had Harness LLC. Uh, Nickel's bid was the lower bid, it's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then Harness was two hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight and then ninety-two cents. So, yeah, just, yeah, go ahead, sorry, no, you go ahead, you go ahead, we'll probably.
About a hundred thousand of that bids, roundabout, the two different bids, was the stormwater part replacing that. And then the other half is basically the paving, it was seven hundred feet of that. Um, but just talking with Dale and Ted, we probably need to really look at that sewer line to make sure. And pipe bursting is probably the best bet, and I know he's done some calling. I think the best thing to do, even though we still make a move quick on this, is probably not rebid this once we know what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Are you talking about that pipe right there in front of, where you got to come over there?
It's been there for a while, so we've, we gotta connect to Main Street all the way down there, so no engineer involved because we're going back existing, but a hundred thousand dollars to do that.
Okay.
So I guess I was thinking about going across the road, but it's going straight down.
So it would connect at Main Street?
At Main Street.
And it would go on down, where the water's coming out is not where it was, but it's on down a little more and it'd be just a, um, what's the word? Uh, they'll put a box in and a flow up there, it's street flow now, or yeah, she flow.
How much, how much of the street wall we're gonna pay the whole?
Seven hundred feet down the olive.
Down the olive, okay.
Any other questions? Just glad we're getting this done, but I appreciate y'all. Y'all know I've said it from day one, fix what's underground before we fix what's on top.
You know, our thought was at first is like, we've always been told that we gotta fix everything under there, well, it's almost impossible to fix everything, cause it's so, eh, you know, infrastructure. But when we really look to camera this, this is the one we need, cause I think we'd be going back digging it up a few years later. There may be situations in town where we can do that evaluation, not have to do that, but for this one.
We already know we got an issue, so.
Yes, sir.
Just, I guess, a roundabout figure, would, do you have any clue about what it would cost to do that, I'm, I'm talking about?
The sewer.
The sewer, yeah.
Um, two hundred dollars a foot and I think it's somewhere up around eighty thousand dollars to pipe burst, am I right, Dale?
Yeah, cool.
That's, that's just for the initial burst, so what they'll have to do is after they pipe burst it, they have to dig up sections to, to retie it. Um, if, if we don't do this and we pave the road, then we have collapse, because it's all vitrified clay, which is very old, it's poor condition. We found some section, instead of a long run of pipe, it was three foot sections that kinda snake. If we, if we, if we pipe burst it in the future after we pave it, it will sag, so. But two hundred, two hundred a foot is a, is a probably a good rough estimate, and that's not counting all the additions of digging up, tying in, cause they'll have to expose it to tie it. And every bit of that will settle, uh, with this.
So, and me and Shepherd talked about days, the worst case scenario, if there is one and that's too expensive, we go back. The, the goal of this is why we picked it, there's a hole in the street.
That's right.
Worst thing about it, we know, we can spend the hundred thousand dollars, let's fix it, and then we'll spot pave over top that, I don't wanna do that, I know you guys don't either, but we wanna fix that hole in the street.
Yeah.
So just know, we're gonna go down this road and see what it costs us, can we afford it? If not, we'll fix the hole in the street, we know we can do that.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? John Deere Lawn Mower Surplus reversal.
So Public Works wants to keep the John Deere mower that was declared surplus by resolution twenty twenty-four sixteen. Um, you all authorized the sale of that mower, um, and now to reverse it, we would ask that you have a motion to remove this item from the surplus sale.
Okay. Any questions? C T form back truck, Hipper?
This is just a F Y, F Y I item, every time we have debt, the state requires that once we have co- closed on the, closed on the borrowing and presented everything to them, they send us, we fill out the forms, they send us back a proof copy and that copy is just has to be presented to the electoral body, elected body at the next meeting after the bond is done. So we closed on the bond last month, of course, this was something that was in the works to get the USDA grant to buy the back truck. We've been using it, I believe, since July, so the bond closing happened last month on its four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, not a voting item, just a F Y item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We covered F, possible election certification.
So the election will be certified on November twentieth, which is the day after our meeting. Um, the new commissioners will be sworn in at the beginning of the December meeting, then the commission will elect mayor and vice mayor. In twenty twenty, if y'all remember, you passed a resolution establishing the procedure for that election process. We'll make sure to put that in your packet before that.
Okay, any questions? Any comments from citizens? Yes, ma'am, please come forward if you don't mind. No, don't be, at all.
Me too.
Concerned citizen here. You may not turn in. Um, the gentleman here addressed a thousand dollars on the pipe system before you assess the money and the damage, right?
You're talking about wastewater and liquidated damage, yes, ma'am.
Right, and um, whether, um, how urgent it is to finish versus, cause I, I live on that one whole street, so, um. it sounds pretty, um, detailed really. And, um, something that, uh, could be wasted money in the future. So you, so, um, is the urgency to top that hole only? Or is it urgency, urgency, urgency to really repair that so the residents are not, um, because we're talking property, property value as well.
We're talking about East Merchant Street?
Yes.
Okay, got you. Yeah. So that's a thought process that we bid it out to fix the drainage and then actually mill and repave that portion of the street down to Olive. After further review and looking at the sewer, we don't really wanna do that. Uh, so we're gonna go back and look at that in a timely manner, hopefully. If worst case scenario, as I said, the goal is to patch that hole in the street and fix that drainage. So the drainage will be fixed, but we wanna make sure that we, if we can, the sewer mill and repay that.
Right. So I'm speaking for the other residents because they live on that street, but I do not. I have not communicated if, uh, it's a concern for them as well. So, but you said that the line is crooked, that it is not circulating like it should. And if not, that sounds very serious. In the future, if you had to dig it back up and you're talking, you know, taking money away from the city for a project that you can do now very well.
As far as the sewer line?
As far as the hole, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you're looking down into the street. You're gonna pave all the way to Olive, right?
Seven hundred feet from Main Street.
So I was just wondering how, how much of an urgency, urgency is it to, to really, uh, solve the problem for future, um, prosperity of the city? I just.
Yeah, we wanna solve that whole equation of the problem there. And then what does that look like? We need to put it out for bid and see what it looks like. I think every street in this city is, you know, it's not, it's urgent, but we're gonna be looking at that, there are street plans and everything else. And as each street comes up and we allocate funding for that, we'll look at it and same like, do we need to do this? We'll evaluate it. We may have to do this, may not have to do that. I'll answer that for you.
I think, if I can interrupt you all, so the citizen comment time is supposed to be for you to address the commission, like to tell them things, but not for them to speak back to you. So I think this conversation would be better for you to have.
If the residents are getting letters that the water is not clean, um, that is a concern. Is that, is that gonna be a part of the, uh, understanding that it would be addressed?
They open you.
I, I think that we can.
I'm trying to go by what you're saying and that's a concern.
Yes, but I think that this is for you to tell the commission things, but they're gonna direct you to Dale over here and you can talk to him after the meeting. He is the Public Works Director.
So is, is he going to let me know about? Are you working with this gentleman? I, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
He's over our public works.
That, that letter was, the, the, the letter was sent by me and I, I would love to explain it to you.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Any board staff or anybody? Yes, sir.
We're new to the area and I'm not sure if the protocol, but, um, I was wanting a clarification and maybe this is not the right time. In Sugar Creek addition, uh, the water line that you're talking about is going to go to townhouse?
Yes, sir.
And that's not in Brookside. It's someplace else?
It's behind the funeral home in that open lot.
Okay. So there's gonna be townhouses.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, Chipper his, yeah, get him too. Thank you. Anybody on Philip?
One thing, mayor. So tomorrow, eleven AM at the communal dinner, the city Thanksgiving dinner, you all are, guys invited. So, but eleven AM tomorrow.
I'm sure it'll be good. Anybody from the commission? Anything? All right.
First of all, I'd just like to congratulate you two.
Thank you.
And also like to congratulate everybody that was running. It was a good, clean, you know, it was, it was really a good, a good going. And, and I have one other thing, I guess. I've had several calls on, and I don't know, that's just something I guess you can discuss or we can discuss down the road. It's a, I guess our businesses, you know, I talked to several of them, they're saying that they're losing, you know, quite a bit of money because of the construction. And I don't know, you know, if there's any way that the city could maybe, and it would have to be an honor system, you know, for the businesses, you know, if they've lost money, maybe the city could help them out on their taxes attempting.
We do not calculate property taxes, the state and the assessor's office at the county does. We do not have any ways to rebate taxes, tax relief. Everything comes from the state of Tennessee and the, and the assessor's office at the county level. The tax files we put into the system, I'll get a download from the state of Tennessee. We don't get to amend it. We don't get to change it. And every time we have to amend anything, it has to come as a signed form from the assessor's office at the county.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
I think Mike, they put up more signs, maybe direct them how to get to our bids and maybe that'll help.
I don't know if you've seen on First Avenue, but they've got now the sign up that says it's a red light, turn right to go to downtown.
That's the one that got me here today.
Anybody else? Alrighty. Thanks, everybody for attending.